Hey, good evening everybody, welcome to the Town of Hadley Select Board Meeting of June 7th. So the first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. So tonight on the consent, we have no minutes, but we do have one Article 1749, 1750, 50 S, and 1748 payroll. We have an automatic amusement license request from Primo Pizzeria for one arcade machine. Chapter 90 project request for cracked ceiling, various locations, this is for my DPW. And then a second one for paving request, also various locations. We have an Agreement Amendment Number One for planning assistance by in-between the CPA Committee and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And then we have a police appointment of Lauren Triggs as administrative assistant to the Chief of Police.
Motion accepted.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Would the Chief like to speak to us regarding his appointment at all?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, go. Sorry. The sound's really down.
Thank you, John.
Sure, I'm a good time.
Would you like to do?
Sure. Hello, so next to me is Lauren Triggs. We hired Lauren, if you remember, last August as a part-time dispatcher for us. She has worked out phenomenally. As you all know, Jackie Lipinski worked with us for about 11 years, left recently. We needed somebody to fill in in the interim. She volunteered and very quickly learned that she really liked the position and we very quickly learned that she is perfect for it. So I would like you to accept the recommendation that we hire her as our new administrative assistant.
We like her even better because she's local.
Okay, motion made and seconded on the floor. Any further discussion about any of the items? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Except for the DPW.
Yeah, DPW.
Okay.
Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, while you're here, do you want, do you have any reason to want us to? We have a housekeeping item which is the approval of appointments. Do you want to take that now while you're?
Jennifer and I have gone over that list a few times. That is, that's all of our appointments. It's standard annual appointment list for you folks and it's up to date.
Okay. All right, so do we want to go ahead and take that item now? So there's 7.3, the annual appointments.
So moved.
Second.
My motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Did you say aye, Donald?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, okay, thank you.
Does it change?
Okay, we do have an allocated time slot for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Yep, yes, sir? Public comment?
On what issue?
Oh, no, this is just kind of a general open timeframe where if people have something that they want to communicate to us, they can. Okay, so you're here for some other purpose, okay. All right, then, Donald, go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I spoke to the Chief a couple of months ago, I should have brought this up when he was here. Coming from Amherst, going over the bridge on Rocky Hill Road, you know where those cement poles are and telephone pole to the right and it's a pond behind it? The Chief reviewed it for me and the last year, those poles have been taken out 12 times, either anywhere from six to nine and three poles, telephone poles have been taken down. And I'm wondering if we could put, when there's a snowstorm, you can't see them because the snow piles over those white concrete poles, I'm wondering if we could put some kind of reflector sign prior to that area?
That would be DPW, we could ask them to do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it's probably Marlowe, right?
Probably Marlowe we want to ask.
If it's happening recurrently.
Yeah.
It's close to a swamp, so they can't build a shoulder out very much, but yeah, they have been taken down quite a bit and that's, the road narrows right there when it goes to the bridge too.
I think there was one there previously because the metal frame for a sign is bent over, but there's nothing on it, so.
On the Hadley side, not on the Amherst?
No, it's Hadley side. Right after, you know, where you enter the football stadium, coming towards Hadley, another maybe thousand feet, right where you rise to go over the bridge.
Right, and so you're going with the bus, right? You must be sick.
Yeah, and then there's a pond behind it too, so.
Yeah, and Jerry, since you're the liaison to the DPW, right on East Hadley Road, there's a, some poles that you go over, this little, not a brook, but a.
Culvert.
Culvert. And you can't now see, the poles are kind of leaning and they're covered with brush.
On the west property?
No, it's right, it's on East Hadley Road, it's on both sides.
On both sides, okay.
Cookside and the west side and it's a narrow road, it's a little shoulder on either side of that.
Yeah, that needs to be addressed if they, if he could take a look at it at some point.
We call them markers, it's not to mark the edge of the road.
Right, but they're like, they're leaning. Kind of a little hazard there.
Happy to take care of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Pips, you can go, take care of yours, direct question as well.
Thank you.
All right, okay, so we have a scheduled hearing at 7:15, 7:25, actually 7:35 and 7:45, so.
We can do some other stuff.
Yeah, we'll do some other stuff first. So do we want to move to the substation and senior center updates?
No.
No?
I'll hand it over.
Oh, are they planning on coming? Okay.
We could do the, we could do the fire station.
Yep, okay, fire station update?
Did you want?
Yeah, we met filthy and the committee voted, technically, I wanted against to explore the stoppage.
Hynaski property, sir?
What?
The Hynaski property, sir?
Right. Right. The tail's liking the dog, the dog's not liking the tail. There was a motion made, Joyce Chugler brought it up, to spend $5,000 to do some test boring on a site. I think that's totally ridiculous and we're going back to rate to square one. There's no architect picked to look at that project, to specify where a building can sit on that project. So where are you gonna spend $5,000, are you gonna board a whole site for $5,000? I doubt it.
So, given the fact that it was, sounded like the majority, I'd like to hear the majority opinion of the committee.
It, it actually was the majority. I made a suggestion that we asked the finance committee to give us $5,000 out of free cash and I also asked if we could get legal opinion to see if, is it proper to do test borings before we say yea or nay to the property?
Right of first.
For right of fierce refusal?
I imagine that we would need the landowner's permission first.
Okay.
So, just to put it in context, the reason, the reason that this is coming up is because the bid came in significantly.
Higher.
Higher than anticipated and we found out that, I think, $370,000 to $380,000 of the increase in cost is specifically related to the site work required to prepare the.
Pre-load, yes.
Yeah, prepare that field for construction. So given the fact that there's a possibility that we could buy another significantly larger parcel of land for a comparable price, then that, I mean, I just want to make sure people understand why this was coming up at all, which seems in my mind to be quite prudent.
And the person that did the test borings, did some geological, I don't know how he did it, but he did, right, Donald?
Mm-hmm.
And research and found that it was at a higher level, it was of better quality, some areas are sandier than others. He was able to tell this without doing some test borings, but it still would need to have the test borings done to it to be sure that that's what, this whole valley is of blue clay and that's part of the problem with the piece on, well, it's not a problem, it's just everywhere. And to bring in the backfill, we would also use the property there, when you bring in, you gotta take apart, that other dirt would be used on the North Hadley site, so that was a little bit extra, but the total over is over $600,000 for site work. It's $598,000, $700,000 according to the pa, piece of paper.
Not the, not the increase, but the ultimate total.
Not the increase, but the total was $598,000.
That includes the architect, that includes a lot of other things, that's not just the site.
No, I just said site work.
And again, who's gonna pick out the magic spot where this building's gonna build? And also, why are you buying so much acreage for a substation? You guys are planning to sneak in a DPW and you're not telling the people this.
Donald, did you have something you wanted to say?
The fire station does not need six acres or 10 acres.
I haven't even talked about DPW and I don't think you have either, nobody.
Why are we buying so much land for?
Donald, go ahead.
The OPM explained to us in entirety, he went out and quizzed Marion Construction and he gave him a quote for just the upload where the sand has to be dug out, you have to bring in special soil, let it settle for six to nine months possibly, and that, that bid was about, with the upcharges, over $400,000. Just excavating work was like $320,000 and the upcharges pushed it over 400.
So the.
And then the site work on top of that, like Joyce says, pushes every, the site work, there wasn't enough in the bidding process, so it's close to $700,000 like Joyce said.
How much, how much was the drainage work on what we were looking at originally? Just the drainage work?
That's all the answers I have, we have.
What you're saying is? Not all true.
Well, then you'd, you'd tell us what is.
No, I'm not gonna, because you, you turn around and say one thing and I'm gonna say another thing.
John, let's keep this a professional conversation here.
Excuse me?
Let's keep this to a professional level of conversation.
I am being professional. I'm just telling you, they're not telling you the whole truth, both of them.
So, sorry, John, what was the question? The drainage cost?
Yeah, what, what's the drainage cost on, on the site that we're working on right now? Do you have that amount or not?
It wasn't broken down completely. But wherever you go, you're still gonna do the MS4 drainage on new construction.
So we're not that close to the pond if we move to this other site?
The pond really got nothing to do with it.
Sure it does.
Absolutely nothing, because all the drainage has to stay within sight and you're within the 30-foot setback of the pond. And according to Berkshire Design, that, what they looked at that site, that everything can be contained on that site.
Jerry, did the building committee weigh in on this at all?
Slightly last night, nothing significant. I have a recommendation though, I mean, I would like to get some of these answers that need to be answered here too. The entire committee, with the exception of one last night, voted or voted to have this brought forward and to review that other piece of property. It's a change of what the town actually voted on the town meeting floor, so I think we need to bring in the entire committee, if we could ask for the entire committee to come here with the OPM and let's get some answers to these questions that we have, so that we can, you know, at either the next meeting or the meeting after that, so that we can decide professionally how we should go forward with this plan. I don't want it, he said, she said, let's get everybody in the same room and let's figure this out.
Are you trying to say, Jerry, you're gonna use funding what the town meeting voted for, that they specifically voted for?
I don't, I wouldn't say that at all, John.
To spend the money on the ball field.
At that specific site, if.
You cannot use any, any funds out of there for anything else.
So we would bring them in to talk about that site, so.
They can't do that, so you're leaving?
Well, the site that we currently have, they can talk about. Let's get this solved and then let's get the answers to what we need to.
I'd like to get an answer out of you, why are you buying such a big site for a substation?
We don't buy in anything.
No.
Your committee brought it to us, we're reviewing that information.
Excuse me, it came from his mouth to bring it out in the first place, to buy, to explore your first right of refusal, to buy it for what reason? Are you gambling, putting the DPW on top of the backs of the fire station?
No one's talking about DPW except you.
All we're looking at is the fire station right now.
But why, why do we need?
Land issues right now, it's pretty close to the pond, John.
Now, the.
We've got drainage issues over there that you don't want to answer me about.
The what?
I want to know how much the drainage is gonna cost and what you're hiding there in the drainage, it needs to be maintained for the next 100 years.
All right.
Listen, I'll give you a breakdown here if you can find it, that's all I have. You want to see it?
So, so just to recap, so again, just, just to recap.
I'd like to see it, yeah.
Just, okay, so just to, we'll bring, try to bring this conversation to a closure. So to recap, town meeting voted after a lengthy presentation from the, from a couple of folks, including the, the police chief, to move forward with the substation in North Hadley. I think what we're seeing is that, you know, that presentation in large part was based on the idea that we would be able to effectively take land that the town already owned and it would be very cost-effective for us to put a substation on that property. So I, I think what I'm hearing anyway is that at this juncture, now that more work has been done, the idea of that being a cost-effective solution doesn't seem to be on the table any longer at that site, because clearly if we need to spend a comparable amount to prepare the site for construction and we could purchase land, which hasn't been bought yet, and have a clean construction site and acquire acreage, because the last I left off, we're not making land anymore, there's only a finite amount to go around, then it seems like that is something that we should seriously consider in the best interest of the town. And I'm gonna take it one step further, and this is just me, but now that, now that there's been such a significant change, the other thing that's transpired since we had that conversation with town meeting is we've now gone on record saying that we're supporting a full-time fire force and I want to come back to whether or not it makes more sense to take those dollars and apply it to central station. So I agree with Jerry, but I also think we need to have the police chief in the room and have that conversation out before we go forward with a.
Or the fire chief.
Fire chief, I'm sorry, before we go forward with this other project. So how, do people feel comfortable having that conversation?
Two meetings ago, I brought that up at the fire substation committee and I asked the Chief directly how he felt if he had, instead of $3 million roughly going into a substation, or you had it infused into your department $3 million and you had a full-time department, you know, and he's sort of caught in the middle because he supports the substation, but my belief now, I think that's possibly the way to go, because we were gonna give the fire chief four new additional personnel, but we could only find the money for one. So, you know, the writing is on the wall, it's only time that we're looking at a full-time fire department.
Right.
With the amount of things they have to do.
So, I mean, I just think we need to accelerate that conversation.
And the committee didn't say that they would abandon the project totally, they wanted information on that piece of property in North Hadley before they would ask the town for an override to continue with that piece of property, because that's what it would take, would to go back, do a special town meeting and to take and, get an override for the extra monies that was needed. So that's why they asked to explore that other possibility.
Sure, no, then that makes sense.
One more item, Madam Chair. Initially, when this was brought to town meeting, the price tag on it was $700,000. It has since dropped to $400,000, which is a significant figure.
Five hundred.
I think it was 500.
I thought the one we had was 400 in our real estate thing.
Yeah, I think, I think it was five, but if you remember, at the time, we didn't really have a plan for it. It was like, just recommended that we buy a parcel with no real specific plan for the land. And then that kicked off the whole town meeting discussion. Tanya?
Yeah, I kind of have a random thought there, in terms of funding the growth of the fire department, I don't know if you guys have looked into any kind of assistance to firefighter program brands that would help kind of phase in the costs of.
Yeah, thank you, we actually would deny it a safer.
Okay, all right.
But it's good to have the honor.
Three years in a row, if you can help us with that, we're more than happy.
Absolutely.
How about, no, could you help us with that?
We would love that.
I think you probably did.
So, so when did we have, we had talked about having public safety in for, I don't remember if it was the 14th or the 21st this month?
Right, so I think we had to set them up originally for the 21st, but I was looking over your agenda for the 14th and you have a lot of time there, so we could, we could bring them in.
Could, could we try to put this on the agenda for next week then?
You know, to Donald's point again, and I, and I keep bringing this up and I've talked to the Chief about it, even if you go with full-time, Amherst still has call force, Northampton still has call force, you're still gonna need the volunteers.
Amherst doesn't have a call force?
Absolutely they do.
Well, has you mess.
Absolutely they do.
But they don't have.
The off-shift people carry a beeper, just like we do.
Well, it's a disaster, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's been the proposal all along, was that.
You're still gonna need the volunteers.
Yeah.
Full-time departments still use volunteers.
Right.
Nobody's gonna argue that point with you, John, but if you take another town, the biggest town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is Belchertown, 63 square miles, they only have one main station and they handle everything no problem, and they only have three full-time employees there.
So.
And they're all volunteer, they have a good volunteer force too.
Yeah.
You know, there's no reason, we're not gonna cut out of our volunteer force for sure, but my, what I'm trying to say, do we need a $3 million building to house one or two trucks that could be housed in main station with full-time people? If you have full-time force, the fire alarm comes in and they're off and running. When you have a substation, these people have to get to their site from their bedroom, change up, get there, and the main station is running as soon as the alarm goes in. That's a big difference.
Yeah, so let's have the conversation with the Chief and he can respond to the, the questions then and whoever else you think is needed from, I mean, it seems the sole, whole subcommittee should try to be present as well.
We'd like though, I think it's fair and I think there's some conversations to be made. We certainly saw that the demeanor can be a little on the rough side.
Yep.
Five minutes over.
And also I'd ask if then we could please just hold up slightly, because I think we may want to make sure that we do that at the same time if the senior center wants to come into, we have the same OPM, I think it would be prudent if we, if they need to come in and have some discussions with them, so that we, we keep it open, that they know that that date's available for them as well.
Okay.
You know, my questions answered, answered back on the fire station here, it's roughly 88.7, 700, 88,700.
For the drainage?
For the storm drain.
Storm drain, okay, that was your question.
Now, that's just for the storm drain to fit on that particular site. What I'm saying is, you know, you're, you're talking a little less than $100,000 right there, that could be saved if we could do a different drainage system on a different piece of property.
Yep, gotcha.
Five feet away from the main station, John, the cost is $295,000.
Yeah.
For all the extra, and it's the newest one we got from the OPM.
Okay, is that, what's date on that one, John?
So we do have a.
Is it dated on that 6/5?
Yeah, John, we do have a scheduled appointment, so we're, we're running late. So we have a public hearing scheduled right now for an all alcohol license for Joe, is it Eckerly?
Yes.
Eckerly, okay. For the taproom, which is gonna be located at the Mill.
Valley.
Valley, comments, thank you. Okay, so Jennifer, do you want to?
Absolutely. Joe has come in with his application for all alcohol general on premise license. He has met with Chief Spankable and Timmy Harder Building Inspector, they've both visited the facility, passed the inspection, and have approved of it. Chief Mason has also approved, seen the application, approved of this application and Joe's been very cooperative and everything is in order. All the butters have been notified and the public notice was published two weeks in advance, so this is Joe.
What are you doing over there, Joe? Tell us.
Sure, I have, can I give you guys a packet I have as well?
Sure.
Just for the re prescription, I'll talk to it. Opening, I'd like to open a taproom there and we're looking for a general all liquor license, not, not to sell hard liquor right out of the gate, but eventually maybe someday. Start off with beer and wine, all craft-centric, local breweries, local small farm wineries, and just creating a taproom, kind of a one-stop shop for a lot of the, you know, the local brewers and a lot of farm wineries and the farm brewers that are in the area. Low-key, higher-class type place, it's not a place for frat parties, it's not a place to buy dollar pitchers of Bud Light, it's a place that people will come in, enjoy a nice glass of wine from a local winery, pay eight to $10 for it, same for the beer, somewhere between $6 to $7 for a pint of beer, and just run a pretty classy place. One of the butters last night had a concern that we're gonna be opening and cars we drive away at 2 o'clock in the morning, that's not the case, we'll close at 11:00. I'm too old to stay open till 2 o'clock in the morning anyway, so I've got chores at home, but that's, that's the game plan, opening like usually around probably around 5:00 and closing around 1:00 during the weekdays.
Food?
No food.
No food?
No food.
You can't drink and not have any food?
People could bring food if, and if they would like, but we will not provide it or cook it or, the space is not even set up for food. It's a 2,400 square feet, 2,422 square feet space, right in the middle of the building.
Local breweries, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah, so like an iron do, a brick and feather, an honest weight, some of the little small ones out there, they could really use a hand to get their, get their product out into the marketplace, like Blackbird's one of the wineries, local wineries as well.
Okay.
Do you, do you make any of this alcohol at all?
I do not.
Okay, there would be people that would want you to showcase their material to buy it alcohol.
One more time on that one.
Is it a bar?
It's a bar.
Okay, all right. A taproom.
Yep, absolutely.
It's a bar, okay.
A classy bar.
Yeah. A classy bar without all the shots of alcohol and stuff on the wall, you know, at this point. Eventually, when there's a local distiller, there is such a thing as a farmer distiller, someone who is small scale, makes their vodka and their, and their rum, I would love to get someone like that in there, there's just no one around right now that's in that category.
They want right across the street.
They don't make it though.
Yeah.
They bring it in.
Yeah. So, any other questions for, for Joe?
Madam Chair, the only comment that I have is the intersection it's in, it's a very problematic intersection. Trying to get in and out of there are just going down Mill Valley Road, trying to get out of Mill Valley Road and I could envision, envision that being very congested in that whole area and backing up possibly Route 9 and causing major problems.
But the planning board already allowed for the development to go in, right? They have a site plan. But I think that's something we, we have talked about that intersection before, it's kind of on the watch list.
Do you know, do you know if District 2 was ever notified about that intersection for further plans on Route 9 or not?
Yes.
Yeah, weren't they after that meeting we had with the, the poll hearing or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this is a public hearing, does anyone else have anything that they want us to offer about that?
Is it me?
I'm in a butter, 257 Russell Street, immediate butter. My name is John Skibiski and I have reservations concerning a taproom there. My interpretation of a taproom is that people will come in and they'll be drinking the evening away and then leaving, and that intersection is a hazardous intersection. It's not easy to maneuver out of that Mill Valley and onto Russell Street and people that would leave the taproom at that site would be impaired, their judgment wouldn't be as good as maybe somebody that didn't come from the taproom. And my concern is that the site is too dangerous for an alcoholic operation and for that reason I would be opposed to a taproom going in on that site.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skibiski.
Police chief was made aware of this and signed up on it?
Yes, he was.
If I may, I actually met with the police chief out there, we took the site, I walked into the good room, looked at the parking situation and, yeah, he didn't have, I agree, it's, it's a tough corner, it's, it's a, you know, whether you've had any beer or you haven't, it's a tough corner, but the police chief did not seem concerned about, about that.
So you would be the first business to go in here?
No, there's actually two businesses in there.
Two others, yeah.
There's Irish Dance Studio to the right and a karate studio to the left.
All right, any other questions?
My other question is, why do you choose not to service food? Because that's a big part of making your revenues for your business to operate.
So a lot of things, one, that's not my wheelhouse, it's not what I do, two, that, that facility is not set up for, for food service in any way, shape or form, there's, I have to actually put plumbing in there for, for what I want to do and just not big enough for, for a restaurant. I have to actually put plumbing in there for what I wanna do, and just not big enough for a restaurant.
Especially with the gas moratorium on...
Well, I'm just thinking even munchies, you know, something like that. You probably have pretzels and all that stuff, probably, or nothing.
Well, see, a lot of people, kind of the thing nowadays is just, it's food trucks, the more food trucks can come in, and it's not on Route Nine, it's on the side street.
No.
That's for some people, not for me. But people just, they'll order delivery, so we'll have a phone there, people can call and order food that can be delivered right there, and they can have it there. It's just not, it's nothing that I wanna get into, I'm not good at that, I don't wanna do it, so...
Sure, you have your business plan, yeah.
If we were allowed this this evening, and we found out down the road it did become a problem, what are our rights as a select board at that point?
You can always, if you have a public safety concern, you can always bring in the applicant, review the license, review the practices, and make a decision at that point.
It can be revoked?
It can be revoked if you have a reasonable reason to do so.
So you understand our concerns, you understand the concerns of your neighbor here, and I think we're gonna hold you to your word that you take care of that issue.
One more thing, real quick, all our servers will be TIPS-trained, they go, we pay for them to be trained on serving, how not to serve certain people, it's a... I mean, it doesn't matter, my wife's a lawyer, so she's not letting me get into any trouble whatsoever. So, and I'm a vice president for a very large company, I have, I'm a pretty responsible person. And, believe me, I don't just wanna have someone drive out of there and drive into a tree, so it's...
I didn't see her name on this.
She's a lawyer. Tim, you...
Certainly, there's been a number of those that have been there quite often. Anybody with common sense, it doesn't take a left coming out of there, you take a right.
Take a right, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit longer, but, you know, if it gets really bad, maybe we can ask them to put up a sign and say, "When you leave, please take a right," instead of a left.
I think patience and common sense are two of the first things that leave when you question, when you talk about alcohol.
True, true, yeah.
Motion except. Can I ask one more question before we do that? Have you run any other establishments in the past, or is this your first venture with alcohol?
My wife owns an establishment in Florence, that's her establishment, she runs that, so I hear the stories when she comes home, my first one with alcohol in a situation like this.
Okay, so there's a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion made and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, congratulations, and as Mr. Devine said, we'll circle back once we have some experience. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skwibisky, for your input, sir.
Okay, we have a scheduled appointment with our outside auditor, Ms. Tanya Campbell from Melanson Heath. And Tanya is here tonight to give an over, provide an overview of the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending two thousand and sixteen.
Now, given the time constraints on the meeting, do you wanna just talk specifically about the management letter, or I can talk about a couple of the key numbers in the financial statement?
Yeah, I think what would be helpful, is we've been having a lot of conversation about just the general health and well-being of the town of Hadley, so maybe if you could just kind of keep it at, you know, ten thousand feet, and then, yes, the management letter.
Okay.
You mean in the ten minutes allowed, you can't go over the sixty-one page?
I know, I know, just like, can you give me a, like, a one-minute warning or something like that? So I'm just... Sure, so, and of course, we're looking at June thirty, two thousand and sixteen, but at that date, the town had, oh, just over two million dollars in stabilization fund, which represents about fourteen percent of the town's annual budget, which is a very healthy stabilization fund balance. In addition to that, you also had about five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in your OPEB trust fund, which also, you know, for a town your size, is a very healthy balance in that fund. You know, a lot of towns are struggling in terms of trying to put money aside for that, and you guys seem to have a good system in place in order to put the funds away.
Say that again?
Yeah. I just said it's a healthy balance, I'm not saying you should put money in there, I said you have a good system in place.
Mr. Devine will remain silent for the remainder of your presentation.
No, I deserve that one.
From the bond rating agencies and the outside, you know, financial advisors, I mean, they obviously look at your reserves, that is a reserve, obviously, it's more restricted than a stabilization fund, so, you know, it would be a good idea to put money in that first, but you have a very healthy stabilization fund balance. You also have a healthy unassigned or unreserved fund balance in your general fund as well, so what's available is like the starting point for your free cash calculation. That was about nine-hundred thousand dollars at the end of sixteen, which was about six percent of your annual budget. Again, very healthy, within like the DOR's recommended range. So, from that perspective, I think those are, speaks to the, you know, good financial position of the town. You know, things like your OPEB liability, or your net pension liability, like, other things like that that I'm sure you guys have heard a lot about lately, I mean, those are huge unfunded liabilities that everyone has. When you look at anyone's financial statements, those numbers are just astronomical. And it's gonna get worse, because in two thousand and eighteen, the town's gonna be required to book the entire share of your OPEB unfunded liability in your books. Currently, you're allowed to, you're allowed to, like, amortize that total liability over thirty years and book a little bit each year. But the agency that kind of set that, the parameters for doing that, has changed their mind and is now being required to get the full amount, which is what was required with the net pension liability, which is your share of the Hampshire County retirement systems. That was required to get booked last year. So both those are huge numbers, I think, like, I don't know if you guys have five million dollars in net OPEB obligation at the end of the year, which will go up to close to seven million dollars in a couple of years, and your net pension liability is ten million.
And what's the cash impact of those?
Nothing, because they're pay-as-you-go.
Right.
You're not required to fund them, you're paying, you know, what you need to pay on a yearly basis in terms of your retirement assessment, which is on a schedule to be fully funded, I'm assuming around twenty, thirty...
About twenty years, something like that.
Everyone's just a little bit different, but, and the system as of twelve-thirty-one fifteen was about fifty, fifty-five percent funded, so, which is pretty much right in line with all the other retirement systems in this area, so... So, yeah, there's no cash impact on that, you're paying it every year through your assessments and your retiree health insurance, which is what your OPEB liability is, you're paying that cost yearly too, so...
Very good, thank you. And so, are people comfortable with Tanya going right into the management letter, though?
Sure.
All right, so, in terms of the issues we found during this year's audit, I don't know if you guys have a copy of the management letter in front of you, or...
I emailed the copy, I emailed the draft one, plus our responses.
The first one had to do with entering your revenue budgets in the general ledger to actually track your revenue versus what you're actually taking in, your budget of revenue versus what you're actually taking in, in your general fund, your water fund, and your sewer fund. That wasn't done in fiscal year sixteen, so there was really no good way to kind of track how, what you were doing. Your expense budgets are in there, which is clearly more important than entering your revenue budgets, but your revenue, entering those budgets in the GL, you know, allows you to look at it quickly and see like how you're doing, and also provides historic information. Like, if you're going forward every year, you can quickly look back and see, okay, what did we budget last year, and what did we need to budget this year? As opposed to having it in Excel spreadsheets or different sources.
Right.
So, we recommend those get entered, and my understanding, I did get the town's responses, that's been corrected through seventeen. The other budget issue we found was that when a capital item is voted at town meeting and say it's for borrowing, that approved budget was not being entered in the general ledger immediately. During the conversations we had during the audit, our understanding was that there was, they waited until conversations had kind of occurred between the department head and the town accountant and the treasurer, to make sure everyone's on the same page before entering that information in. But, things can happen with capital projects, you know, extended periods of time can pass before things move forward. We would just recommend that going forward, as soon as it's voted at town meeting, when you're entering all the other budget information in there, that that gets entered as well, so you have that tracked immediately.
And management's response, sorry.
Is there a timeframe on that?
No, I mean, there's not a timeframe, it's just, you're just entering a budget so you know, like, okay, we voted to spend this much on this project. Exactly, so like, if you start spending it, you can monitor that. My understanding is that has been resolved for seventeen as well. The next comment had to do, to approve accounting for capital projects. When the town votes capital items, they're, like, a separate account set up for each capital item, so you can track those costs separately, as opposed to just entering them lump sum in the, you know, general ledger, so you can track the revenue and what you've expended on those projects. During fiscal year sixteen, we found that the expenses were being charged to the right line items, but the revenue, like, when you transferred in funds from stabilization, all got transferred into one line item, as opposed to being allocated to the different accounts. So, when you got to the end of the year, you didn't have a true depiction of kind of where things stood in that project. So, we recommend, obviously, going forward, that the revenue and the expenses be, you know, posted to the correct accounts, so you can actually see kind of where the project is, and especially at year-end, just making sure you cover deficits and things like that, you don't wanna get hit in your free cash. And I'm sure that has...
Excellent.
Wow.
I like these ones.
I know, right?
If you wait long enough to get the audit...
You'll have to look for something new next year, I guess, right? Okay. Challenge accepted. The next comment, there's a couple, like, smaller things we noted in there. There was a public safety equipment grant that ended up in deficit at the end of fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and when we had made inquiries about it during the audit, we were told that, you know, it over-expended, and it would have to be funded on next year's recap. 'Cause, I don't know, it wasn't being monitored properly, or there was some miscommunication about what the, you know, what could be that.
Personnel turnover as well, yeah.
Misunderstanding, I think, of the process.
Right, so, yeah, so I read the response, and I guess that has been resolved, and there's no longer an issue with that deficit, which is good, but unfortunately... So I can, like, take that out of the management letter, you know, I don't know, I mean, it's still an issue in terms of, like, monitoring it, but there's no deficit, so I don't know if you want me to, like...
So, this was an item of discussion during today's department head meeting, and the accountant was saying that he doesn't get as many of the grant, copies of the grants as he should, and so I think having this here is a reminder for all the departments that we need to tighten up.
I was just unsure if you wanted me to tweak the wording and say that it needs to get raised next year?
No, and I agree, this particular issue with that grant, in fact, we have since gotten all the funding, and I think when you were being, when you were here for the auditing, it seemed like it was too late. And when they had their additional meetings with Department of Revenue, they retroactively approved more funding and understood the situation. So that's been solved, but I think David's right, that this, having something in there saying, "We need to monitor all of our grants a little more closely," won't hurt us.
Okay.
Is this letter part of a bond rating at all, is this requested for bond rating?
I don't think so.
Not necessarily serious deficiencies.
Yeah, there's no, right, no major issues. The next issue we noted during the audit was the trial balance, the report of all the revenues, expenses, activity during the fiscal year, didn't agree to the balance sheet that was submitted to free cash, for free cash certification, we always tie those numbers out. And we later found that there was an entry or two that got posted for free cash certification, I don't know how it exactly works, but didn't end up in the report that we got, so, you know, I don't, I don't know how... Free cash was certified before we got the reports for the audit, so I'm not sure, I think there was some kind of issue in the system, something didn't get released, and based on, like, what the response said. So, it got manually adjusted for free cash certification, maybe, but then just didn't get released in the report we got.
So it sounds like more of a cutoff issue.
Yeah, I don't get how it, I don't get how that works, so, I guess, not everything's clear enough, but going forward, we'd recommend that, like, all entries get posted, everything in the general ledger actually agrees to what is submitted to the OPR for free cash, and then at that point, it'll agree to whatever is given to the auditor. So I think there just need to be some tying out there, maybe after the fact, and that didn't happen, so...
Question you have?
Mike? Yeah?
Ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, Mike Szczesinski, Ten Laurel Drive, Planning Board member. Used to be a member of the Hampshire Council of Governments, and as you may be aware, Hadley's a member of the Council of Governments. The council has some significant liabilities. If, Mike, I'm curious if those liabilities could potentially flow to the member towns if the court is dissolved.
I don't believe so, but that would be more of a legal issue, I think, in terms of how they were, the master of law they were established under. Are you talking about in terms of their retirees that...
Retirees, home benefits specifically.
Yeah.
If you look at the balance sheet, they get a significant...
Yeah, we did their audit, too. Yeah, so, they do, and I, I'm not sure. I know another town that we're auditing is talking about that with a collaborative that they're a part of, and wondering if they're, that's an issue, but I do believe that's more of a legal. You'd have to get a legal opinion on that. I would think the state might take that over, I know that they're trying to work with the state to get them to take that liability, but they haven't been successful to do it, yeah, sorry. I hope not, I...
So, because there's just one final comment? Is that it?
And that had to do with reconciling the cash check breakdown on the turnovers. So currently, when a department does a turnover to the treasurer, they give a copy of the turnover form to the treasurer and a copy to the accountant. The accountant posts it in the general ledger, the treasurer posts it in her books, does a deposit, and then at the end of the month, they reconcile cash, and theoretically, they should agree. As a check and balance on the treasurer, actually, if Justin or someone in his office could randomly, 'cause I'm sure it can't be done in every single one, but pick a sample, you know, maybe every other month, pick a couple turnovers, and go to the treasurer's records and trace to make sure that those turnovers, the cash and check on the amount that she deposited into the bank agrees to what he's seeing on his turnover. So he needs to bring his turnover forms in there and make sure those amounts agree. The town's response, I wanted to just recommend a little bit of a change in that, only because I think you had recommended that you could provide him copies of deposit slips.
We thought if, because it's, we only do one to two a week, so maybe it's six a month. So we thought if we copied the turnover with the deposit slip, which showed the date of the deposit of cash, that that would take care of, or you need something else?
No, that's fine, I was more thinking you were just randomly gonna give him some, and I'm like, if the check is on you, you picking which ones?
Oh, no, I was gonna, we were doing all of them. If there's cash, that we would just do, because there really aren't that many.
Okay, and that's, then I'm okay with that, okay.
Six-page, in fact, we talked today, and thought even if we just scanned them and sent them to him, that would be okay, so...
You know, I mean, we've seen before where, you know, unexpected receipts come in, you know, same numbers tie, everything looks good, and, yes, exactly. So tying out the actual cash check, you know, prevents that. Even if it's done randomly, if someone knows you're doing it, then, you know, it's a good control.
Any questions for Tanya on the management letter, or anything else?
Your total balance for the whole town, the, on page fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay.
So that's net balance due of twenty million dollars, that's what we're carrying in right now, roughly, for a total.
That's what, that's what we're carrying in right now roughly for a total.
Uh, twenty million dollars, that's your long-term debt, your landfill closure liability, which is the estimate over the remaining like fourteen years or whatever you have. To monitor the landfill. Your crude sick and vacation time, which like if everyone left as of June thirtieth, like that's what you'd have to pay out based on the contracts. Your net OPEB obligation, which is your retiree health insurance and your net pension liability. So that's, um, that's kind of all your liabilities in one, um, one lump sum.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just going back to Mike's question with Hampshire County, so that, that, that's got the retirement in it right now.
That, yeah, so that's your share of the unfunded liability of the retirement, of the, of the retirement right now. Because I mean, it's not their liability, they're, you know, they're not, they're managing it for you, but it's responsibility of all the members to fund that.
Okay.
But we're in a net positive position.
Hampshire, and, and that's Hampshire County Retirement System. He's talking about Hampshire Council of Governments, the, you know, which is a little bit different. I mean, they're.
The state owns the retirement system anyways.
They, Hampshire County does, the, you know, yeah, yeah, no, the state doesn't.
State doesn't, so it does go through Hampshire County.
Yeah, you're all your retirement contributions go in Hampshire County Retirement System and they pay your taxes.
Couldn't, excuse me, the state say, yeah, we'll take care of it. They're going to decide legis- legislatively that these obligations will not be the obligations of the member town. That would be a solution, wouldn't it?
Are you talking about the retirement system or?
I'm hanging on the, the call.
The call, yeah, that could happen. There's no way that it would ever be funded by the group insurance trust, which is a portion of that. I mean, they're very legally, they're, they're legally separate and, you know.
And we're going to have Joe Shea from the group insurance trust in, in two weeks, twenty first?
Two weeks.
One week, fourteenth.
One week.
Right, okay.
Right.
So we'll, we can address some of these issues when he's here then.
Yeah, I mean, he can't speak to the, to the council, but, um, but he can talk about the trust, which is in, you know, much better financial shape, yeah.
No, he can talk about the trust. So anything else? If not, thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
No problem.
Especially when you're sharing good news.
Thank you. Yes, and as of right now, you have very little debt, but.
That's about to change.
I think in a minute it's going to change, so, uh.
You're going to sit here five more minutes?
Okay, all right, thanks very much, Tanya.
Thank you.
Okay, so our seven thirty-five appointment, running a little late here, so fifteen minutes.
You didn't give me a one more morning.
You're bringing good news.
Yeah, sorry, we only cut off people with bad news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, Tanya. Okay, so we have the treasurer and our outside advisor, David Eisenthal, here this evening to talk about our short-term borrowing.
We have a new ban coming up next week. This is what went out to bid a couple of weeks ago and it came in. Our interest, uh, it's one point nine nine six five seventy-six, one million, nine hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred seventy-six is the new ban principal.
And, and ban, because people are listening at home as they bond.
Bond anticipation? No, basically, it's a note.
Yeah.
These are one-year notes that we are doing at this point while we're building up to the bond stage. When we, we will be definitely in bond territory when we get these larger buildings, um, further along. Because our total amount that we are borrowing, eight or nine million dollars, I think is the total that we ultimately will need to put into a bond. But in the meantime, we're building up slowly rather than borrow that money early. Uh, last year, we did a four hundred thousand dollar note, which carried us through till this year. Uh, we were paying half of that off and refinancing half of it, rolling half of it into the new one-year note. This will be almost two million dollars. The interest rate we got on this was one point two four.
Repeat that, please.
One point two four percent for our one-year note, which is, uh, which is, it's, it's drifting up from last year. Last year it was, it was great, one point seven four, but one point two four is pretty good too. So that will take us another year. If, if this isn't enough, if the buildings really get going earlier in the year, we'll, there's, we may possibly halfway through the year, maybe October, after our fall town meeting. When we see what else is, uh, by then we'll know if there's something else in the pipeline and we'll be able to make adjustments accordingly. We may do yet another note in October. That would either be for a full year or we come due with this one and we might be ready to go into a larger phase. But for now, we're doing the one-year note.
Okay, and when we went to town meeting and we talked about the possibility of if the substation, the senior center and the library, right, all go. And we talked about that ninety-five dollar increase in taxes, what was the interest rate assumption we used on that? Five percent, right, okay. So again, just want to give.
Five percent ultimately on the bond. But we, we did have a rising note level. And Dave Eisenthal and you know, they did our, did all of these estimates for you. This might be a good time to have David talk. And what I can do is go down the row and have you do some signing.
Mm-hmm.
Does, does that make sense that we do this at the same time?
Sure, works for me.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, yes, we last fall prepared a capital financing plan that really, and I, I think we did this very cooperatively with the treasurer, with the town administrator and with your board. And got some good direction from the board as to how you wanted to see the impact on the tax rate from these very significant capital projects that were authorized by town meeting last fall. And we did assume a five percent interest rate, but that, that was on a bond issue that would, that would be three years from now.
A bond, yep.
And I, I still, I think even three years from now, that's probably pretty conservative. But I felt that it was better to be on the conservative side than not on the conservative side.
Right, and I, I just thought it was good for, and of course, an anticipation note's going to carry a different rate of interest than a, than a long-term bond. But I think it's good for people to hear that we're still in this incredibly attractive rate environment.
Right, and you know, this is the first financing following the release of that capital financing plan. And as I said, the goal is to structure the financings to maintain that relatively stable tax rate impact. And I think as, as Linda said, our, our next step is to assess cash flow projections of the, especially the two major capital projects. To determine amounts and timing of additional financings. We have been assuming a major ban issue, much larger than this one, as early as October though. If, I think your fire substation is going a little bit slower than had been imagined, then it's possible that they, that the timing or the amount could be different, could be later, could be lesser. Really, I expect that I will be speaking with the treasurer and the town administrator about expected, projected cash flow expenditures.
If the bond that we were looking for, for both our senior center project and for our fire station, ends up coming in somewhere at two versus an anticipated number of five that we plugged in. What is the dollar amount difference between that? Is there, is that an easy number to figure? I mean, I know it's not three percent off of it, but it's a significant number.
Um, I could figure it out, but I wouldn't want to, I would have to be doing a lot of key punching to figure it out.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're crunching numbers everywhere and that's an important, important number.
I do think that two percent may be, you know, and we were, we're expecting that this to be a twenty-five year bond issue. Final payment projected for this issue would be fiscal year twenty forty-five with bonds issued in twenty twenty. I think that even at lower interest rates that prevailed, say, in the last three to four years, I don't even think you would have seen two percent for that. I think at this point, a twenty-five year issue, you might see going with a credit like the town of Hadley. I would think that you could be somewhere under three percent if, if this happened now. But I think there are all kinds of reasons why the town is not in a position to do a permanent financing for either the senior center or the fire station, North Hadley Fire Station.
At this point?
At this point.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Haven't we?
I'm trying.
Haven't we?
No, I, I agree with you. It's, it's a good point to make.
Haven't we in the past refinanced any time that we could anyway? So when you do go out to borrowing and we do a bond for X number of million dollars, you look at everything of what we have on the books and then go back and, and do it again.
Everybody in this room has been very diligent about pursuing opportunities to refinance debt. There are not currently no such opportunities. The bonds that the town issued in twenty fourteen are callable sometime early in the next decade, meaning that that's when the, the bonds can be paid off. And there is a procedure called an advance refunding, where the town could issue bonds in advance, well in advance if it called. I do not imagine at this point that an advance refunding of that issue would be economic. But we will be watching that. That would probably be the next opportunity, maybe in a few years. We will be watching for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for David Eisenthal or Linda about this? If not, you need us to vote on this or is this?
Can I ask one thing, Madam Chair?
Oh, hang on, yep.
It's kind of simple, but I know the auditor alluded to the OPEB. That being one problematic area we have to watch very diligently. Is there any other areas that we should be watching that could affect our standard and pores rating?
You know, I think that, um, the way that the, that standard, that standard and pores looks at OPEB, it's considered to be in debt and contingent liability, which is ten percent of the rating. I think that as, you know, my sense is, and I have, I, I haven't looked at the numbers closely in terms of the recent, and I, we haven't, we haven't seen the fiscal sixteen audit, it's almost a year after year end. But the, uh, I, my sense is that the fact that the town has a significant trust fund offsetting the liability would be, is helpful. But we will, you know, we're going to keep, we will, I guess I'm not really answering the members' question directly, but we will look at whether there is cause for concern. My thought at this point is no, there's not a lot of cause for concern, but it is something that we all need to be watchful for. And it could have, if the liability, both on the retiree health insurance side and pensions, started to expand relative to town resources. That is something that we would want to watch in terms of impact on the credit rating.
Significant increase in staffing.
Well, yeah, or, you know, if, for whatever reason, the liability increased if, um, the investment funds didn't perform as expected, for example.
And somebody had asked at our meeting last night about if we had gone for the property in North Hadley to do the extra work that we had to do on it. Would we go for an override or would we ask the citizens to take money out of stabilization? You know, I'm like, no.
That's a pretty good chunk coming out of stabilization.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, which is, uh, I don't think you're already talking, you know, you, you got that two million one in there. That's just a nice cushion that you don't really want to. You can, you can speak to that. I mean, that would not be a, a good business deal to take that, that out of there.
I mean, I think that one of the very great credit strengths of, of the town of Hadley is the very significant operating reserves. And that doesn't mean that you can never use operating reserves. And I mean, I think, I think there could be intelligent use of them. But we'd want to keep an eye on where the, both free cash and the stabilization fund sit relative to the town's operating expense revenues and expenditures.
You know, back, back to that other point, we're sitting on twenty million dollars of liability now, long-term. You know, on top of the eight million that we're looking at these two buildings right now, possibly a third. And that's, that's the big question that we're all looking at is if something did go wrong, where would we be at?
You know, the, I think that unless something very drastic happened, the town would have very good access to the capital markets. Uh, I don't think, you know, and I think unless interest rates go up radically, and even what, what we presented in the fall was actually the case of interest rates going up radically. I mean, I think five percent would represent for a twenty-five year bond issue would represent it.
And to Jerry's point that he asked, you know, if we're not looking to borrow this, this bond in, in three years, that five percent that we had projected, and it's three right now. You know, two percent's a big, big number, you said yourself.
Well, I, I'm going to point out that we did discuss the option of having at least a partial permanent financing earlier to take advantage of, uh, lower interest rates. The difficulty there is that it, it's my understanding that this board's policy view is that, is to maintain as stable a tax rate impact as possible. And doing multiple permanent financings would cause peaks and valleys in the tax rate.
Sudden impact, yeah.
More of an impact, so, but to maintain, and you know, you mentioned the, the liability. The li- the town is also paying down every year a portion of its long-term indebtedness. So as we get closer to twenty twenty, some of that money will be rolling off.
Some of it we're paying down and some of it we're just maintaining, so.
We're paying about a million a year.
So, um, I, I think that the, the, it's, it's, it's really a, it's, you are the policy board of the town. And if you chose something different, that would be your choice. But our understanding of where this board at least was last fall was to maintain as stable a tax rate impact as possible.
And if there's ever an argument from your perspective where you think maybe we're missing an opportunity because of our policy? I would hope that, that you would work with the town administrator and treasurer to bring that to our attention too. I mean, we're doing what we think makes sense, but if their best practice is out there, given the rate environment, you want to talk about it, we're happy to have you come in.
Right, and I think that we, when we made that call as to how you wanted to do the financing, that didn't commit, you, you didn't set up a plan for any of us that this is what we're going to stick to, no matter what happens. That every time, uh, well, we come in here, every time we have a new note, it's going to be at least a year, maybe twice a year, we reevaluate at that point. And maybe we're, we're, and, and as far as going out for the bond, we don't have to wait till we get there. Everything's done now, as David's suggesting, we could be doing a smaller one in the meantime and take care of that and pile up. So there's a lot of forks in the road of how we handle this. And one suggestion you said, Jerry, what if the interest rate goes down? We could have the interest rate go down, but still keep that tax rate up there by more of the amount that we allocated to pay debt and interest each year. More of it would be going to the principal.
And fill it in, yeah.
Or we could say, well, let this tax rate start drifting down because the buildings aren't happening after all, or you know, something else. So there, there, the situations will, will change and each time we have a town meeting, there may be yet another capital item to consider. So it, it's, it's very fluid, but I think right now it's going the way we, you know, we have thought it would at this point.
So you need us to approve this borrowing, correct?
It's your choice. The Department of Revenue, which is certifying this note, does not actually require a vote.
Oh, okay.
It's your choice as, as the select board to, if you want to take a vote, that is what that's.
It's always clearest.
Best practice.
Okay, is there a motion then?
There is a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, thanks very much.
Can I ask him one more thing, Madam Chair, before he leaves?
We've already signed it all anyways, so.
I'll make it quick.
If you make it quick, yeah.
Another problematic area is when we leave annual town meeting, we postpone it to fall town meeting, hoping our free cash account will build to over a half a million dollars. What's going to transpire if we don't have the Rose economy that we have now? We start losing meal tax, hotel tax, and say we're two hundred thousand dollars short. We probably would have to get that from stabilization to make sure we fund the two eighteen budget.
You know, you're going to the issue of how the town budgets. And my, my view of that is that in general, the town budgets pretty conservatively. So that you do generate, when conditions are good, you do generate that, where hundreds of, you know, a couple hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars in free cash. But I, I think it would up to the management of the town when that times are not as good. And actually, I've been working with the town long enough to see some of them. Most of the time, it's not the local economy that suffers. I've actually ne- you know, almost never seen the local economy here in the Pioneer Valley suffer. It's mostly what's, what happens in Boston with state budget that can have a negative impact out here. And what do you do if you get either at budget time or even? And what do you do if you get either at budget time or even a mid-year 9C cut from Beacon Hill? So, I guess what I'm saying is, yes, it's, it's worth thinking very hard about if times don't, don't do, don't, if, if economic times do get hard, that's when conservative budgeting becomes even more important. You're not necessarily going to generate the free cash, but you might not, you might be able to manage with more, with more of what you have.
You know, we're very fortunate to live in the five-college area. That's the reason why we don't see the recession like other cities do.
I absolutely agree.
The influx of money every year of students coming into the area, you know.
Okay, so we're about 25 minutes behind for our next appointment, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Linda, and you're staying for the Hampshire?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Are you going to do that? Do you have something else first?
There's something I need to notarize. All right.
It's ultimately a vote to authorize the notice to the unions that you're going to take a vote on health insurance next week.
Okay, is that fairly quick?
It can be.
Because the discussion really will be next week.
Yeah.
Where Joe Shea is coming to talk about it. But there's a need initially of Joe.
Okay, so go ahead.
So, basically, next week, we're going to be asking you to adopt three sections of Mass General Law, Chapter 30. It says three, so I'm going to, I'm going to say three, and then we can cut it back to two. Okay, so, let's not quibble.
Yeah.
So, next week, we're going to be asking you to add to your tool chest for financial management. And in this particular case, the financial management will be your ability to engage, if necessary, in plan design for the health insurance. In order for you to take that vote next week, you have to give the unions and the retirees and the Secretary of Administration and Finance at least two days' notice. And so, we have prepared letters to go out to the four unions, the retirees and Secretary of ANF, for you to authorize that, that notice tonight. That's basically what we're talking about.
Okay, so this is basically an administrative item, and any conversation of substance will occur with Joe Shea next week when he's here.
So moved.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and if you have the document, then I'll sign it so that they can take it and notarize it?
Yeah, it's general.
They don't, they don't need to notarize it.
And that's something else.
Oh.
And I don't mind doing whatever you have to say.
Sure, something needs to notarize?
This would be the, the...
David, that's general, right?
Heron APR.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to know her answer.
I think that's a second.
David?
Yeah.
It's already been done, right?
What?
It's not an additional thing that's just being notarized, it's already been approved.
You need, you need to vote to authorize the APR.
Okay, so can we jump to Heron APR then?
Sure.
This has all been discussed, and this is, again, it's administrative?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so if you want to pass that down, I'll sign it in front of...
Let's see, it looks like there are places for the entire board to, two places for the board and one place for Joan.
Okay, and so...
As long as I'm watching, I'll...
Yeah, okay, right, good.
Okay.
Okay, Municipal Building Committee, welcome, sorry, we're late. So, you had asked for audience, you wanted a dedicated time slot with us? So, you guys want to go, you want to shoot?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there was a couple of things that we just wanted to go over with you. And we know we're kind of on a hold pattern until we figure out what's happening with all the buildings. But our understanding for our future goals, which I'm hopeful is what you, your understanding is, that we're going to be an oversight of the buildings, per se, okay? Our, our mission would be to evaluate the buildings, see what might be needed on a continuous basis with regard to any type of projects, large items.
Right, not, not maintenance, right, because maintenance is being carved out, yeah.
Yeah, but we can review that to make sure that, there might be some larger maintenance items.
Yeah.
Okay. And then bring that to you for a recommendation, and then it goes to David and Marla with regard to getting the, the, all the figures together after we get the estimates.
Some of the greatest things about what we're in here tonight talking about is that many things that were on your hit list have been accomplished, a great many things.
Yes.
So, I think it's, and I kind of was pushing for everybody to be in the same room so that we were all working in the same direction as to what our, we, how we envisioned, and how you guys envisioned, and how we could work together to get to where we're trying to be. You guys are close to the end of the list that you had. There's a couple of things left to do. We know that they're talking about painting this building, talking about maybe CPA taking on some of those things. We know the DPW is one of the things.
If you take the painting out, there's like $65,000 worth of stuff that we still have yet to finish, very minor compared to the $735,000 worth of stuff that we've already accomplished, okay? So, you know, we're, we'll put that together and make sure that you have it, get, make sure that Marla has it, and then he can run with it with Gary's. But our thought process is that we're just an oversight from now on and working in tandem with you to figure out what's, what the projected capital expenses might be and what the things that we see are potential issues, making sure that the buildings are maintained properly from now on. That's...
And of course, I think we're looking to see what happens with the library.
Yeah, we're kind of on hold on these buildings right now. And if, whatever way it happens, then, then we'll, we'll work with that and come up with some recommendations. You know, if we, if we have the same building, we'll, we'll have some recommendations.
And one of the things, and it goes along the line of the conversation we were just having about cash flow and borrowing, you know, obviously, any capital improvements, again, you know, capital in nature, not your ongoing maintenance, you know, fixing your staircases or something, but the ongoing, coming up with a capital improvement plan and a timeframe would be extremely helpful and informing the treasurer and us from a budgeting standpoint.
Yes, exactly, and, and we know we, we need to jump on that quickly because certainly that is something that everybody's going to be looking at. And we have, and it'll be a lot of different scenarios depending on what happens with some of the buildings, depending on the growth patterns in, with regard to some of the departments, i.e. police and dispatch. There's some thought processes on there to make that work better. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that, figure out what would be the best way of handling that with, with the powers to be, and then come up with some guidelines for that, and then we'll go forward. So, I guess that's great.
You know, in a couple of weeks, we're going to go through the buildings again and just walk around, see if there's anything we're missing, see if anything is looking out of place, use a little, unfortunately, maintenance, but, you know, maybe there's something we can also see that could be developed down the road, so more towards the capital side of things.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I mean, yeah, it makes sense to, to me, any...
I think Marla certainly has jumped in on his new role with this.
Of course he has.
And, you know, there's, and it's going to get a lot smoother quickly.
I think we need to begin to our thought process to where we're going with things like Russell School and things like that. I mean, it's a big, big thing that we need to sit down and address. It's been sitting there for a long time. I know it was utilized last year, but that's another one of those things that I think it's, it's not going to get any better. We need to somehow think, sit and at least have some initial conversations as to the ideas, as to what, how, what shape the buildings in, what the value it is to the town, what we need to do with it. I mean, it's just another one of our projects.
And some, yeah, we have to come up with some ideas. We have to come up with some costs, and that way, we can go possibly through a ballot question to everybody and say, do you want to keep this building? And it's going to cost X amount of dollars. And these are the possible uses, and, you know, and that's a, it's going to be a big question.
Yeah, I mean, I've asked this board, and I've asked your board, too, a couple of times. It doesn't cost us nothing at election time to put a non-binding question on the ballot with some of these questions that we keep asking ourselves and discussing week in and week out.
What's the question, though? I mean, my, my point is, I don't think we even know the question.
Yeah, until we understand.
What are we going to do with Russell School? What do you feel we should do with Russell School?
A, B, C, D.
Put four options there and see which, what direction we're headed.
And we, we've dealt with the other buildings. Those are our primary focus. And we certainly, you know that we kind of had a flip-flop on how our thought process was, but that's fine. We're where we are, we're going to go forward with these things. But yes, this is the time that our committee needs to look at, seriously look at Russell School and give you some recommendations and give the residents some idea of what it's going to cost.
Yeah.
And we all know it's going to cost a great deal of money if we want to keep it.
Will you be wrapping in the, the master plan update, too? Are you reviewing that and seeing if there's anything in there relative to?
We should be. Yeah. Because the town center is, you know, we've always talked that it's important to us as a committee, and I think to the town as a whole, but we should see how that interrelates to the master plan and see if we can maintain it in a way that's useful to everybody without losing our identity, because this is really truly the identity of the town.
And that is part of the master plan, what everybody has said.
Exactly, and I think that goes back to, so to John, John's point, and Jerry's. You want, so if we're going to go back to the town and ask them anything, you want it to be in the context of something, so it'll be helpful for them to say, you know, our master plan indicates, you know, has anything, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, that would be great if you guys do wrap that into your review process.
But I suppose we should keep in mind, though, we are planners, and we would just be going off of what somebody else probably should be leading.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and the planning...
In the town in that respect.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board really is taking the lead on the master plan, but I mean, it's excellent information, and everybody should be using that as some sort of a guidepost in all of our decision-making.
There's line input.
Right, so I just don't want to forget about it, you know? Anything else for the folks from the Municipal Building Committee while they're here?
Well, I think after they go through the buildings, we should have them back and again, sit and have a, you know...
We certainly can do that.
Yeah, and those could be a lot of, we have a lot of miles, so we just had a discussion earlier this evening about the fire substation, so there's going to be more soon about, about that project. Haven't heard from the seniors yet tonight, but we will with that project moving forward. The library grant, I think July 13th is the magic date, right? So, we'll know if the grant's thumbs up or down. Won't presume an out, but I mean, if it's, if it's dead, we'll know that, otherwise we'll know that we're staying the course with that. So, I think there's a lot happening over the summer.
And we're available to help with anything, you know. Even putting something on the ballot or whatever it is, you know, write something up, just let us know what we can do, so.
Has, has your board taken a vote on, on our endeavor here with the substation?
It was just presented last night, it wasn't a full board.
Okay.
Most of us, majority of them.
Okay, anything else for our good volunteers?
Good job, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
And, you know, we knew, we have the new roof on the public safety complex.
That looks great.
I hope everybody drives by.
Yeah, it does look good.
It is another one of those extremely smooth projects. There was no real hiccups with that. It has come out extremely well and has come at budget, so we're, we don't have to dip into the...
That's the third budget I, I, I venture to claim. It's on budget, but it was the third budget, so.
That's true.
Well, yeah, and we, and you know the reason why. It's not because of anything other than...
Getting it off the ground, really.
...with the way this state deals with these projects.
You guys needed, last night it came up, there's something that needed to be signed. What was that that needed to be signed, and how do we clarify that today?
That was the bill for the...
No, no, the contract, isn't there a contract that we're wondering whether or not it's been?
It's all...
Is it all set?
Yeah, I asked David if everything's been set with Architectural Insights.
For the library?
For the library and everything, that's all been signed.
Yeah.
Good point, that was a good point, yeah.
And you're happy with your liaison?
Oh, for God's sake.
Oh, Jerry, we love you. Oh, everybody say Jerry.
All right.
Stroke him.
Do you still want to do?
David, you have something?
So, I got a penultimate bill for the, the roof, everything except for the 5% retainage. Do I pay it?
For the roof?
Yeah, for the roof.
Yes. Are they finished today?
All done?
All except for the retainage, punchless.
Work is done.
Punchless.
Punchless, okay.
We didn't vote, but I would imagine.
Yeah, you told me you're...
We talked about it last night.
Tell me you're unhappy, and I won't sign it.
We're very happy now.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Nice roof.
All right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And so, seniors, are you here to talk about the senior center?
What would you like to know?
An update on the senior center construction project.
You can go ahead, and I'll jump in.
Had the forum?
We had the forum. The morning of the forum, we had the estimator's results come in, which were much higher than we anticipated. And I think there was also a shock to the architects, because they had been saying, well, this looked like something we wouldn't be able to do, and that's why they were encouraging us to go along at that level of 12,000 square feet. So, we were basically a quarter over the construction budget, which means that we have two options. We can try and trim, we can do value engineering, excuse me, correct term, to see where we can save on that building. They also presented this with another, several other options, including a smaller building, which might have an addition put on it later that would function for us. And it will take about two to four weeks to get the actual cost on that building, because it isn't dollar per square foot when you reduce a building.
Very soon.
But the meeting was held and the redesign was put together, an alternative design was put together approximately 2,500 square feet less than the original plan that was put together to start with. And the, the parking lot has been made smaller, and egress has been questioned as to whether it's needed or not needed onto Route 9. We're talking about exterior designs, I mean, materials that's going to be on there, and everything else that we're talking about as far as materials that are going to be used in the building.
Yeah, one of the things is, there are so many components, let's say there are 100 components. We've got numbers back if we change three of them. You know, it's, it's a process, because it isn't the same person that does all of them. The window person does the windows, and the door person does the doors, and the ceiling tile does one thing. So, it's all, and then if you change, if you take out a window, you still have to put in the insulation and the wall inside and outside where the window is going to be. So, it isn't just a clean removal of that cost.
Well, and I think, I think this was articulated by, by all of you at the outset of this, and certainly folks up here, that I think everybody's far more concerned that wherever the project goes, that it's done with the highest value and quality, and we're not hung up on timeframe. And I know there's always a concern that we have pressure because of rising costs, but I think we have all learned that it costs you far much, you know, far more in the long run, looking back, saying coulda, shoulda, woulda. Right. When things aren't done well, so.
And we are committed as a committee, from the get-go, we've all said, we do not want to sacrifice the quality of the building. So, one of the things that we were surprised at when the estimate did come in was the actual cost of the site work, which was budgeted for 340, I believe, and came in over a million. So, so that was a huge surprise to us. We're looking at things like where does that drop off in buildable soil happen, seeing as how there were only three boring stone? Can we isolate that particular place a little bit more by doing a little bit more studying? Can we, what is the cost of going from one water management for the parking lot system to a different one? And if we do do that less expensive one, how many parking spaces can we get out of it? So, we're looking at options like that to see if they're workable options that wouldn't have, that would still work well for the functioning of the senior center, but would have a greater impact on the dollar amount. We want to look at every option that we can. You know, I guess it's want versus need at this point, and we're being very realistic. And if we end up... Um, and, um, if we end up, you know, one of the options being the, you know, if we, if we do a ninety-five hundred square foot building instead, it's, can be designed in such a way that if we can come up with the funds within a timeframe or down the line the seniors decide, you know, whatever, uh, you know, it can be, those two or three spaces that get deleted from the original building, we don't have to reinvent the site to make it workable. So we're, we're trying to be forward-thinking, get it within budget, have a building that, you know, that we're not gonna have to go back and change, like the HVAC system, the safety complex, things like that. We wanna do it right. We wanna have a building that's gonna last, that people are gonna wanna come to, and that's gonna serve the needs.
I, I would just say that some of the discussions relate to this very tricky issue that, uh, the chair here mentioned of value versus quality. And I'm a big value person in my own personal life and so on, and I must say that it cuts both ways. Early on, we had a lot of discussions about energy efficiency. And we had people exploring LEED certification and other kinds of thing, which some people would say were indicators of very high quality in a building. And we finally came to the conclusion, I think it's fair to say for the committee, that we wanted as many of those energy-efficient features as we could include without going through the very great extra expense of actually qualifying for the certification.
Exactly.
So that's my idea of that. And I think there's other, I mean, lately, one issue was, well, would it be the end of the world if we ended up with vinyl siding on the outside? We haven't answered that question, but not optimal, but maybe a reasonable compromise if money is tight.
So where we're at right now is we've thrown all those options on the table for reducing those costs, and we've been told they have to, between the entities, between the civil engineers figuring out the questions with the parking lot, geotech, and the cost estimators getting back together again, the gathering of that information is gonna be two to four weeks. So we're not jumping. We wanna do this right. We wanna get those figures and make an informed decision based on that.
So we'll expect to hear, really, the next major update will probably be in July, then?
As soon as we hear back from them and the committee meets and makes some decisions around the direction we think we should go in, we'll keep you updated.
Anything else for, I shouldn't say seniors, senior representatives?
Tell them what a good job it is.
He's on his own, Mr. Golding.
Right under the bus, Dad, right under the bus.
When I, when I spoke to David Nixon the other day, he said he was putting this project on administrative hold. What does that mean?
It means we're not signing contracts with architects to, to authorize design work until we figure out how we're gonna move forward.
But we need them to do design work to get the numbers we want.
Haven't we already signed those contracts and we are in the midst of that?
I mean, they've been working their tails off, you know, doing plans and doing estimates.
I mean, that's not...
I don't know the...
There's already been a class, so what they've done, right?
What they're doing is conceptual.
Right.
David's talking about is the, the true drawing.
No, we're still in schematic.
No, we're still in schematic.
We're still in schematic.
They're not doing anything that's committing us to a course of action until we are all clear as to what that is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I have to think that wouldn't be until July.
By all means, go ahead and do your due diligence with it.
And work with the architects.
And the OPM.
Right.
Fine.
You know, initially, it's, it's really a tough decision the committee has, because originally you were talking twelve thousand square feet. By cutting twenty-five hundred, I know the committee always says, and your director, you're building a building to take care of the service needs of the elderly, and you're continued with that commitment. But I'm wondering, by cutting twenty-five hundred square feet, how long is that commitment gonna last before we're looking at putting on that addition again, you know?
That, that was Gary's point at our last meeting. He, you know, he brought up the, he brought up the point that, that if you, if you know you're gonna need an addition, then you know it's already too small. So twenty-five hundred square feet less is a, a number that will represent how we're gonna meet the budget. There's a big gap between what the estimators came out with and what we have to spend. And if, if, you know, the fact of the matter is this building is gonna cost this much and we have to downsize it, the OPM said that it's probably not gonna happen through value engineering. You know, it's gonna have to take a big, huge chunk of building away. And so, you know, he suggested, you know, maybe you should consider going back to town and asking...
Gary, too.
Asking for, for more money to get it done right the first time.
And we're doing the same thing with the fire substation.
Yeah.
We did the same thing with the sewer pump stations. Once we get into the design work, it, it changes so much, so drastically, and the costs go up so quickly that it just, it, it blindsides you sometime at, at what this stuff costs. And it's not, you know, it, it's, it's on a needs issue still. It's not on, on a wish list. It, it's, you know, this is just the quality of the, the buildings that you're putting up.
And that's what, you know, the, I'm, I'm very proud of the, the senior center building committee for sticking to their guns about having a quality product in the end. And pretty, the MBC last night pretty much, you know, voted that we're, we're missing one person, but it was, it was five, uh, zero with one, uh, one abstention uh, in support of, of going forward with the senior center building. As long as they, as long as it stays in budget, no matter what the size of the building, if they can, if we can build a quality product in that budget and it's usable, that's fine. But if, if the fact is the building, you know, is going to just, you're just gonna need more money, we're gonna have to go back for more money to get it done, then the MBC would not support. And, you know, the, the, you know, going forward with that without, you know, complete, you know, look at, at, you know, what, what we're actually doing here. I mean, we want a quality product and we want something that's gonna serve the town for, for years and years and years. We don't wanna screw it up. We're creating the past here. Don't wanna, we don't wanna make mistakes.
I know. We just, we just, Timmy just stated, you know, there was over eight hundred, almost a million dollars in repairs we did. Some, some were needed repairs from wear and tear, but a lot of them were just lack of maintenance on our public buildings, you know? And part of it was because we didn't build it right, you know?
Installing obsolete products from day one is not a good idea.
Yeah. And I, and I wholeheartedly agree, but I think what we're hearing tonight is we're, we're not quite at that decision point yet. So the next milestone is really that July meeting, whenever that happens.
And again, the li, once, once we know what's gonna happen with the library, that, that'll clear, you know, a bunch off the...
And every conversation I've had with most everybody that's contacted me about both buildings is we're replacing a hundred-year-old bill, over a hundred-year-old building now with the, um, Hooker School, the old Hooker School, and with the old fire station, which was built by, you know, hook and ladder and donated property way back when. So I don't, the people I've spoke with don't want their kids and grandkids to pay for our mistakes again, you know? Let's, let's tell the people what it's gonna cost. If it does cost us a little bit more, Dan, then, you know, that's just the way it's gonna have to be, you know?
We appreciate the select board's support.
And I appreciate that as well, but I'm asking for clarification. Are there stipulations on going to town meeting and, and asking for more money? Are we changing the use of the building?
And, and again, I think any conversation along that line is so premature. I mean, I think we need, you, you guys stay the course with what you're doing. Again, you're gonna have a lot more information come July, and I think what you're hearing is if, in fact, the architects come back and say, "We can build you a tiny house." And that will, I just was looking at Tim, so I had to say that, "A tiny house, and that's your new senior center for the allotted amount of money," then I think we really have to have some serious conversation, because nobody's, that's not gonna fly. On the other hand, if you make a strong argument that, yes, we've reduced it to ninety-two hundred square feet and it was still gonna serve the needs of the seniors, not only the population today, but the growing population of baby boomers that you're anticipating, and you can say that with a straight face and, and everybody's supportive of that, then that, you know, and, and maybe it's gonna be somewhere in the middle. We just don't know.
Okay.
That's a fair statement.
Kum bah ya.
Oh, my God, tonight.
They like you, Brian.
Well, we like you, Jerry.
We like hearing that you're gonna build a quality building. That's very important.
But the part that scares me is we're building for today, not tomorrow, when we reduce it too much, I think.
We'll just have more hours.
Yeah, you have to remember, too, that, I don't know if you use this analogy, because it's, it's, it's so relevant, is that there's nine exercise classes. Right now, we've just made the July, um, uh... Schedule, and it goes down to four classes, because we can only hold them early in the morning. When you give us a building with adequate heating and cooling, we now have from nine to four to run classes all year round. So we're, no matter what size the building is, that doesn't get, that gets increased automatically just because we have adequate, adequate heating and cooling. So there's things like that that also enter into the equation.
Which makes sense, you know?
And having better access.
The twelve thousand feet is definitely the pie in the sky.
Right.
And we're realizing we're hadly. We can't have all of that. We're, you know, we'll get there.
You couldn't possibly have forgotten we're hadly.
If the twelve came in on budget, we wouldn't be wasting a lot of time.
We started at fourteen thousand square feet, and we came down to two thousand square feet, and now we're going down.
Well, schematic design simply means, what are all the things that you offer? And how many people do you wanna serve? And then the experts come in and assign a square footage. You take each one of those puzzle pieces, put them together, and they ended up at twelve thousand square feet. Can those be changed? Well, okay. Yeah, the classroom can double as the conference room. Da-da-da-da-da. And you, and you look at it all over again and try and figure out, can we still do everything we wanna do, but with this, with the space being used in a different manner?
As I'm sure you all are very aware, the disposal of water from the parking lot has turned out, I think, both with the fire station and the senior center plan, to be a gigantic problem or issue, not fully anticipated. And the latest, my hope personally, and the architects are working on this, is that by scaling down the parking lot, they'll have room for surface retention ponds or whatever would be the alternative to very expensive underground work. And I'm hopeful that's gonna save hundreds of thousands.
That's one of the things we're waiting for.
And I don't know how many hundreds of thousands or if I'm right, but that gives me a little ray of hope.
Do you know what the figure is for that, uh, 'cause I, I...
Two hundred thousand.
It is, it's two hundred thousand.
For the water disposal underneath.
Okay. 'Cause the, the fire substation is only eighty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, so, which is...
It's a smaller area.
Yeah, they don't...
Yeah.
And they don't keep the parking that we do, yeah.
All right. So if anybody has any more detailed questions for you guys, um, we can contact any member of the committee directly. But otherwise, we'll look forward to hearing what you have to say come July.
Thank you.
Well, that and they'd be able to ask you questions at this weekend's Chicken to Go, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Does we, do we have any more tickets?
Is that Saturday or Sunday?
It's Sunday. Sunday, Sunday, June eleventh, pick up at eleven-thirty and one-thirty. Chicken to Go for the Council on Aging. We're looking for a million and seven to build a fourteen thousand, to build a fourteen thousand square foot building.
So if you wanna have to... So if you wanna donate more than ten dollars.
And the tickets are available where? At the senior center.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Dean.
Good night.
Okay, so I, I think this is our last agenda item. We have, um, countdown to fall town meeting. David's on... I thought we voted that.
Yeah, you already done that.
Oh, okay, so we're done with that?
You done, did that.
Jesus.
I think we're done.
So we have a countdown, um, being proposed by David to fall town meeting, and you had given us this draft previously, right?
Right.
Right.
And then, um, also talking about goal-setting, uh, what the select board would like to accomplish in the coming months. So David, you wanna start?
Did you say you have more time available at the next meeting?
Yes.
Do you wanna defer this into the next meeting?
Sure. I, I would like to work a little bit on the goal-setting.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna, you want a generic conversation tonight, or would you like a...
No, I'm, I'm fine. If people aren't, if you want more time, so we can talk about that, I'm happy if you wanna do that next week. Or the twenty, either the fourteenth or twenty-first is fine.
Yeah, it works.
Which one is more time available to us, the fourteenth or the twenty-first?
You'll find out when you get the agenda.
Well, there's some appointments that are a little bit fluid right now.
Okay.
Just because you've gotta talk to the police chief and fire chief. We've confirmed Joe Shea, but then...
Yeah, let me, let me see what the, for the twenty-first looks like. Um, Evans.
We haven't turned up Terry Williams' head either. David says he's trying to do that.
Right, that's one of the key ones we wanted to have.
Maybe that'd be the twenty-first, then, maybe?
Yeah, twenty-first is...
Be more time?
We got that. We have a lot on the twenty-first, so I'd recommend...
Sooner better than later. Let's do the fourteenth.
We got the Hynoski property to deal with, the, uh, annual appointments. We've got, uh, fire substation, senior center, tax, senior tax work, uh, work-off program.
We're gonna have the ambulance, uh...
Are we gonna have the ambulance?
Group coming in.
All right, ambulance.
Because we're going to send Amherst a letter. We need to do that.
We can do that the twenty-first.
Yeah, before July one.
Okay.
Okay?
Fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yep, so fourteenth. All right, so if everybody could be thinking about goals.
Or go out to bed for service, or where, where is the ambulance committee?
They'll be in to tell us.
Right. We, we still have another meeting between now and then.
So, so the twenty-first, you had set aside that as a tri-board meeting as well, so that's a pretty full, full night.
Yeah.
Yay.
You get the next two weeks off.
Well, we gotta think about that.
I can, I can take any night off, but maybe you do it soon.
Okay. So is that it, then, for the agenda this evening?
Uh, I think Finance Committee is here. Is there anything from Finance? Your meeting tomorrow night?
We need to form a meeting.
Yeah.
Need any clarification on anything that occurred this evening?
Okay, so, um, any announcements, other than Jerry already handled the Chicken to Go?
The annual fishing derby happens this weekend at the Lower Reservoir for the Young Men's Club. Fishing Derby starts at eight o'clock. It's gonna run from eight till twelve. Hopefully, everybody knows where the Lower Reservoir is. If you don't, contact hometown hall and we can get you there. Lot of fun. I know they're putting in a bunch of fish. No early fishermen. Tis.
And then July thirtieth, isn't there a Polish dinner hosted by the Most Holy Redeemer at the Young Men's Club?
There is.
There is.
So happy that you mentioned that. And tickets are available for that either at the, um, Most Holy Redeemer Parish Office, or they are also being sold after masses from this point until shortly before.
Then we have, um, a big thank you to everyone that participated in the Memorial Day Parade. Uh, it was a great success. We had a good time. Tom got a couple of bruises, but that darn, that darn tussie roll came out of nowhere, you know? But, uh, really thank you to the Legion and, uh, Gene Baxter, who organizes also, and, uh, everyone that participated. We really had a, had a nice day. Um, then I'd also like to thank the Twenty Acres Farm, um, Tom and Pat Zuzco and Tom and Joan. And I, I know it was Tom and Joan that always decorates the, uh, front of our town hall with their flowers, and it always looks beautiful, and it, uh, still does. It's a great thing to have for the summer. So thank you very much to the Zuzcos. We appreciate it very much.
I think the Asparagus Festival was a huge hit. I think, uh, ninety-nine point nine percent of the feedback that, that I got was good. I know the vendors were happy with it. Whoever sent the weather did a great job.
Yep.
It was good to have John LeBolle, the, uh, Commissioner of Agriculture in town. And, uh, I think it was, it's a great event. I love to see our common being used for events like that.
That's great.
Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.